We need one more for a quorum. Mrs. Chik, Mr. Holden, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Savornich. Oh, okay, we're ready. Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on March 1st, 2000. I'm Councilmember Ruth Galanter, President Pro Tem of the Council. Mr. Ferraro is excused today. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Brinson, Chik, Fear, Galanter, Goble, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Deverly, Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Hallelujah. Let us begin. First item.
Approval of the minutes?
Without objection, unanimous vote. Yeah, right. This being the first of the month, we will begin the meeting with our monthly salute to the flag. If everybody would please rise. Mr. Pacheco, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, moving right along to the first item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Unanimous vote. Next item.
Next item are items noticed for public hearing, items one through four. Item one has a card.
Item one seems to have lots of cards that just came in. Hold on, let's see here. All right, general comments, general comments, general comments. All right. All right, we'll begin by, oh, these are all on item one.
All special.
All right, let's just call that special. We'll go through the agenda and we'll come back to that.
It's a required public hearing, so do you want to just do all the public hearings first?
What else is the required? One through three are required public hearings. And now we've got cards on two and three. I think we'd better hold these for a moment while we get all the cards in, so that we're not doing this. So let's go through the rest of the, as far as we can, while we get the cards sorted out here. If there's anybody who wants to be heard on items one through three and has not yet turned in a, one through four, one through four and has not yet turned in a card, please do so now, so we can be sure you have a chance to be heard. They seem to be coming in thick and fast, so I want to make sure we get them all in before we start. Anymore? Okay, let's do it. All right, first is item number one. This is the, these are required public hearings, so we're just going to go through them. No, no, they're going to get done. So we'll start, we'll begin with item number one. I have quite a number of cards, so I'm going to ask you, if you would, to try to avoid repeating. If you agree with something somebody already said, by all means say so, but you don't have to repeat the whole thing. We'll begin with James Williams, followed by Lisa Brown, and then Robert Livingston. Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams. I don't see Mr. Williams. All right, let's try Lisa Brown. Oh, here's Mr. Williams, okay. Pull the mic down a little bit, so you, pull it down, you'll be much more comfortable. There you go.
Good morning. My name is James Williams. I live 2211 Redondo Boulevard, and the store on Redondo and Washington is very convenient for the neighborhood, and everybody's store is very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Brown, followed by Robert Livingston. You might want to, if I call your name, you might want to get close to the front, so that you won't have to walk so far in the middle of the hearing. After Mr. Livingston will be Jack, August, and then Alice Mitchell.
Yes, my name is Lisa Brown. I just want to let you know, the store is convenient for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Livingston, you might want to pick the microphone up a little bit.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Robert Livingston. I live at 1921 Redondo Boulevard, which is directly across from the liquor store. I've been there for 20 years. There's been a lot of problems, but now that Mr. Kim owned the store, it seems to be much better than it was before, and lately we haven't had any problems since the recycle business has been closed. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Mr. August, I believe, was next, followed by Alice Mitchell, and then Rhonda Morgan, and then Steve Kim. Mr. August. Is Mr. August here?
My name is Steve Kim, and I'm the owner of the liquor store. I own the store slightly more than three years, and I feel the store contributes a lot for the community, selling various staple foods and groceries. The store is more or less a kind of general market, rather than just a liquor store. The store also provides various services, like moneyless, check cashing, and domestic and international money transfers. It also sells bus tokens and phone cards. Many neighborhoods recognize the convenience and the benefit of the store. Many neighborhoods I met could not understand why some people living north across Washington Boulevard complained. Even most of them do not walk down the south of Washington Boulevard. Many neighborhoods think that the store is essential for their daily lives. That is why more than 500 neighborhoods signed petitions in support of me. The loitering and the other related problems are minor when compared to the benefits they enjoy from the store. Eight or nine crimes a year is not that serious for a store, and the crime is declining year by year. Too much financial burden on one store will kill the store, and it will not be beneficial even to the neighbors. The store problem of loitering was chiefly because of the recycling center, which was now, which is now closed. We do not have serious loitering problem after the close of the recycling center. If there is problem outside the store, it's mainly, I think, a police job, community job, city job, not an individual store's job. Police or city or community should not transfer their jobs to powerless, moneyless individual store. They should not impose too much financial burden to one store. I'm sure if there is any crime or nuisance, it is social problem, not just my store problem.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. There are a whole bunch of other people who want to speak. Do the rest of you still want to speak?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I called, earlier I called Alice Mitchell, and then Rhonda Morgan.
Yes, my name is Alice Mitchell, and I believe that we need to keep the store convenient. I have four children. I don't have to walk far to get them food or anything. Mr. Kim helps us as far as the budget that I can afford. I've been stopped frequently with the police officers with my children going to work, not to harass or do anything wrong, to go into that store. The store is not a problem. The store, we need to have that store, not just for us as adults, but for our children. And Mr. Kim works very hard with us, and we can have that budget. We can afford to take care of ourselves and our children in that store. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Rhonda Morgan, followed by Wendell Simmons, and then Kenneth Simmons, and then Artist Devance. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Rhonda Morgan, and I'm a resident at 5186 West Washington Boulevard. Also, I wanted to say, I have four children, and the store is very convenient. I have never had any problems. There's a lot of outside problems going on. There's been quite a bit harassment with the police. It's basically, as she said, Mr. Kim, he's nice, he's very understanding, he's very giving, he's fed the homeless, he's held a King Day free lunching, well, he's fed thousands of people for free. Also, if, you know, we don't, people don't do grocery shopping there. The market is like, maybe two, three miles away, but if you need something real quick, you can just run across the street and go to the store. He has nice security in there, so I feel real safe, and I think the store should stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendell Simmons.
Yes, my name is Wendell Simmons. I live at 2040 Ridgely, and I feel that Mr. Kim's store should stay, should not be closed. I feel that it's safe for me to go there than it is to go around the corner from my house, because there's more gang activity on Hauser in Washington than it is in Mr. Kim's place. He has adequate security, and the store is not open as any other liquor store for 2:00. You know, he closes at 12. You know, that's a decent hour that I feel. But far as like the police, the police, you know, everybody needs the police, you know. I don't feel that, you know, they're not doing their job or nothing like that, but the area itself is a high environment for us, like hostility, but in the last five or 10 years, it's been a drastic change. You know, it's been cleaned up, and I feel that Mr. Kim has, I don't see too much loitering around here, and if there's anything like that, you have boarding care homes, you have six or seven motels that's right down that way, and it's going to cause people to travel back and forth from his store to their home. And it provides adequate, you know, groceries, whatever you might need, a fast bite to eat or something, and he's strict about how he sell, what he sell. You know, I don't, never see him selling nothing to minors. He's always checking IDs, the cashier's, and he's employing some of the people in our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Simmons, followed by Artist Devance, Osi Goggins, Clara Silas, I think it says. Mr. Kim has a lot of satisfied customers on yours.
Hi. My name is Artist Devance, and I think the real problem about trying to remove the store is the people in the neighborhood that don't get out and really see what's going on in the neighborhood. The store is not the problem, you know, the neighborhood is the problem, and the people that are in the neighborhood are not applying the force they need to apply directly on the problem, so they're using the liquor store as an escape. But the liquor store, it helps the community, and I think it should stay.
Thank you, sir. Osi Goggins, followed by Clara Silas.
My name is Osi Goggins. I live
My name is Osi Goggins. I live one block, Pigfoot and Redondo. We need the store in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Man will come straight to the point. Clara Silas, followed by Erwin Felton.
Good morning. I'm Clara Silas. I'm a senior citizen, and that store is really important to me, because I don't have to walk very far, and, and Mr. Kim is very nice, he has security. I need that store. We need that store.
Thank you. Erwin Felton, followed by Judy Devane. Diana... Craytian, I can't read it, sorry. Barbara Anderson, this goes on for quite a while. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Felton Erwin. I've been in the neighborhood for 32 years, and the store is very convenient for me. I haven't had any problems, you know, since I've been living in that neighborhood. And I would like for the store to stay open, if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Judy Devance. And I've been staying in the neighborhood for quite a while, and I wish the store would stay open. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana, I'm going to have to apologize to you, because I'm not sure I'm reading this right.
My last name is Craytian.
Oh, I was pretty close.
Very close. I am Diana Craytian, chairperson of the South Orange Drive 2000 Action Committee. Along with Alsace Block Club and Community Coalition, we have banded together to try to improve the conditions that we see on Washington and Redondo Boulevard. I am the third generation that has become involved in trying to get Redondo Liquor Store to clean up the lot and the building and make their property presentable. As far back as 1983, in the notes of the various block clubs, it shows that they have been trying to get Redondo Liquor Store to do what it needs to do. That's how the first conditions came about. One of the things about the neighborhood is that along Washington Boulevard, there are ten motels, sleazy, excuse me, sleazy billboards, a methadone clinic, and other liquor stores. They have created an unsightly and unsafe community. The neighborhood is an ethnic mix. It is of mainly of working class people who have worked two and three jobs to own their homes. The issue today is the additional security, the fencing around the property, and to make sure that Mr. Kim keeps the conditions that are imposed on him. It's not a popularity contest, as we are witnessing today. I myself have collected over 500 petitions signed to close the liquor store, but that is not the issue. We needed, we need the added security because of the methadone clinic. As soon as the liquor store is open, they are there to purchase, and it creates a problem. We have a school bus stop right across the street from the liquor store. There's always commotion, there's constant activity going on up there. We still see loitering at the store, we still see the panhandling, and what we're asking that these conditions be imposed to mitigate the future problems. Right now, we see a cosmetic fix. We see the cleanup, and we see the paint, but we still see the problems going on. So I, and my neighbors would like you to impose the conditions set forth to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Anderson, from the Alsace Block Club. Followed by Ellis Cha, who is the last speaker I have.
Good morning. I'm Barbara Anderson, from Alsace Block Club, 1800. We are north of Washington. Mr. Kim has been there for quite a while. We've been battling this battle, and Mr. Kim is asking to clean up, improve, and as Ms. Craytian just told you, she gave you all the details of what we have been working on, so I don't need to repeat any of those. So we're asking for the security to be there. We're asking for Mr. Kim to keep the conditions that has been put on him in the courts in the previous. So this is why I'm here this morning. I don't need any more flanfare about what needs to be done. We just want Mr. Kim to do what the courts have ordered him to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Ellis Cha.
Good morning, Councilman, Councilman, and Chairperson. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I'm represent, my name is Ellis Cha. I'm representing Korean American Grocery Association of California. I discussed this problem with, I have more than 4,000 members, but I talked to more than 100 members, what kind of problem exists in different areas, and I kind of made a comparison. And I analyzed what the problem is. And I'm trying to see if we can work together with the city policemen and city councilmen and solve the problem for good, so that our mom and pop stores can do the business with legally licensed and legally monitored by ABC, and hadn't, haven't had any problem with law enforcement for years. The problem that has been pointed out continuously here is that loitering and the panhandling kind of things. In other areas, when we call the police for, when the panhandler is, come to the parking lot and do the panhandling, we go out there and ask him to leave. After he leave, we come back in, and then he come back again, and we go out there and ask him to leave again. He doesn't leave. We call the police. In many cities, it varies from city to city. Some city police come in five minutes, some cities police never bother even for panhandling. In some city, come in 10 minutes. In LAPD, I think their statistics say 11 minutes. And if a police come, come in 11 minutes, we can handle the panhandlers and other problems that exist in the parking lot. With the police and store owner work close together, we can take care of their problem. But no matter what, the store owner by himself doesn't have the power to handle those, doesn't have the power to arrest him, doesn't have the power to kick him out of the community. The best he can do is by calderiette. He can monitor up to the pedestrian sidewalk. Beyond that, he doesn't have any power to do anything. So there, we need the power of police, and we need the help, assistance from the police department. We got to remember that this, this businesses went through a lot of process through ABC and the city of LA to get licensed, and decoys come often and make sure they are not doing anything illegally. And Mr. Kim has been really low-abiding citizen, and he's, he's been really working together with the community. But the problem exists when people hang around outside of the store, and he's working hard to control those. And lately, we've been starting other alternative ways to control those, because security guard can do only so much in the area, only up to the sidewalk. So we started other alternative ways, like UAC, that monitors, monitors the store inside, outside, from Central Division, and relate with the police when, when we need the police, connect with the police right away, so that police can help us taking care of the problems. And this is a problem, it's going to exist where human lives. Where there is a big market or small market, this is a problem. If we have a proper support from the police department and councilman, we can solve this problem with Mr. Kim.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cha.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. That closes the public hearing on item number one. Mr. Burnson has asked to be recognized.
Yes, members of the council. We listened to this case at, at some length in our committee. And for those of you that think that this is anything against Mr. Kim, it's not, nor would these things close this store. As a matter of fact, the grocery store is thereby right. It's only the liquor sales that require conditional use permit, and we are able to condition those things to protect the community. I was very sympathetic. I listened to the public, and they all like Mr. Kim and think that they're doing a nice job there, that the store is a convenience. Unfortunately, it's also a nuisance. I was just reviewing the police report on there, and there was some question, and the committee asked the police, we asked them to give us a report before the council on the hours where there were problems during the year. We had 195 calls during the course of the year from this location regarding problems, 195, at all hours of the day, and it wasn't just at night. It was from 10, from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, from 10:00 to 12:00 in the, in the morning to noon time, and they were scattered throughout the day, and that is a problem. Now, this is not necessarily all Mr. Kim's problem or his fault. But liquor stores do tend to attract problems, and that is the problem. So when we grant a conditional use permit, we have to put conditions in that will protect the community around it, so that they're not impacted by what the negative things that liquor sales do attract. And let's face it, they attract negative things wherever they are, whether it's in that district or my district or whatever, we still have to put those conditions on. What we're asking for is things, conditions that will protect the community. We need surveillance, we need a guard who will do their job. We need these things that are provided for and the conditions that were, were applied previously and not, some not enforced, and by those which the, which the zoning administrator and the committee added. So for those of you who are, are customers and like Mr. Kim, this is not to close him. And this is not going to close the market. It's merely going to put things into place that will protect your community from the negative elements that exist and are attracted to the store. Now, I, I understand that it's an economic burden on Mr. Kim. We do understand that. But the alternative is, if we can't get those things in place, then we would have to terminate Mr. Kim's ability to sell liquor, alcoholic beverages at this location. And that's really the bottom line of this thing. We don't want to do that. But perhaps if these conditions are adhered to strictly, that some of the negative elements that are causing the problems for 195 calls that the police made on this location during the year, will reverse themselves, and they won't be there, and they'll find out that it's not a good place to hang out, and maybe at that time, we'll be able to relax some of these conditions. But until then, I think that we have really no alternative but to put these in place. So I would urge an eye vote on the committee report. Thank you.
Ms. Msakowski?
I just wanted to reaffirm what, what Councilman Burnson had said. We looked at this issue, and at the hearing in Plum, we were concerned about whether or not, the issue was the security guard and the security guard during certain hours only. And we asked the police department to respond to us as to when the incidents had occurred. Were they predominantly in the evening, which would then give some evidence to support a security officer only in the evening? And as I just shared with, with some of my colleagues, this information from 1999, very recent, for the whole year, at Redondo Liquor and the intersection of Washington and Redondo Boulevard, shows a very high number of incidents, 195, of which only 15 came from calls from the liquor store itself. So that means 180 other calls came from other people, where the police were out there having to do something. And it, it is rather amazing that how high and consistent throughout the day when the store is open, there are problems. And the only time that you see a significant drop-off of incidents is when the store is closed, and that's from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM in the morning. So I think that this supported the sense that the committee had, that the security guard is needed, the security guard is, is also needed to do the patrol on the premises, around the premises, in front of the store. We saw pictures provided, despite the fact, people say there is no loitering, there was loitering. There were pictures of loiterers, there were pictures of incidents that one would not want in any neighborhood, and which this security guard patrolling both inside and outside is meant to do. The camera that needs to be put in place needs to be able to rove the entire, you know, be able to screen everything. And so I feel comfortable, based on what the committee did, that the actions that the police department has supplied in detail support that action. Again, this is not a revocation, this is a requirement of a condition of the security guard onsite. That was the issue, the main issue being appealed, and the committee recommended denying that appeal.
Mr. Holden?
Madam President, members, this is my neighborhood. I lived on West 20th Street for eight, 10 years. Right now, I live about 10 blocks away. I drive by the area, and I do take a look at it. I'm familiar with the Alsace Block Club. Some members are on one side, and some members are on the other, in terms of supporting and are opposing the liquor store. The problems in the area have already been discussed with you quite thoroughly. The major problems have been, and one still exists, the methadone clinic. Now, that's not Mr. Kim's fault, but they will gravitate to the liquor store, or they'd be in the immediate area, and if a phone call is made to the police department, the police department would take the position that is associated with liquor store. It's almost like a bus stop. A person gets off of a bus, near a bus stop, if a fight or something occurs, MTAs get the credit for the incident. The recycling center is also in the immediate area, it was. We, we have gone through the hearing, revoked the permit to operate the recycling center. That's just closed. That caused people to go to the store, and that generated some adversity in the neighborhood. I mean, I think there are a lot of people saying they want this store open, and I can understand and concur with that, but it's called fairness. Are there people saying everything that happens in the neighborhood is the liquor store fault? Everything that happens in the neighborhood is not the liquor store fault. I think you got to be very fair about it. Now, when you look at these telephone calls made, the, Mr. Kim's, the liquor store made 15 of them. Obviously, some of the methadone people there are recycling people there, are coming, they're causing the disturbance, and they made the calls, just like we wanted them to do, make the calls. But having made the calls, he gets gigged for that. I understand. What are the other 95? I'm going to ask the police department. I'm going to ask the other police department, police department, to tell me who made the phone calls, and I want, I don't, I don't want them to stack their record. Who made the phone calls and for what purpose? Were they in the general area, were they for the recycling, were they for the methadone, and for what purpose? Did they go directly to the store to see that there was a problem exists? And that's what you really need right now. You need to have that police report. You can come right up here, sir, Captain. And when you hold, I got about 30 seconds left, or if you hold that, then I can ask him a question afterward. Thank you, Madam President.
Good morning. My name is Captain Terry Hara, from Wilshire Operations Support Division.
You heard your questions.
Yes. Aside from the 15 phone calls that were made from the Redondo Liquor, I have documented here at least seven that were not, and it was from, one was from a customer regarding an 80s assault with a deadly weapon investigation. One was from an alarm company regarding a robbery.
At this store?
Yes.
Okay.
This store.
Alarm company?
Ace Alarm Company on June 15th. Another was a customer regarding a battery investigation. We had our Wilshire Vice unit out there conducting prostitution enforcement, traffic accident.
I hope you're not going to go through all 195.
No, no. No, no.
I'd like to also add to the, the total, the 195 included, from the information that we received from ITA, stops that the officers made, code six locations, based upon their self-initiated observations, that may have generated crime reports, or arrests, or just citations, or just field interview cards that were, were written.
Okay, I, I think that you've said enough. I, I would like to, I'm going to see you in my office, because I'm going to get a detailed report, because this, and, you know, somebody driving by, they don't need to hear that right now, because you're not...
Mr. Holden, the suspense is, is difficult to handle. Are you in support of the committee report?
Well, yeah, I'm going to support it, but let me just say... Well, yeah, I'm going to support it, but let me just say this to you. In closing, the lady testified that a lot of liquor stores up and down Washington Boulevard, not true. This liquor store has been there before 1960, when I moved into the neighborhood, right? That is correct. And the one on Orange Drive down near La Brea has been there the same amount of time. That is correct. And there's been no new liquor stores moving into that neighborhood. Now, we got a liquor store over at Hauser and Pico that came in after the 1965 watch riots where they were migrating to the west side of the area, which we opposed, and been no more. So when you come here and say that there are more in the neighborhood, then that's not true, and I know that to be the case.
Okay. Mr. Holden, you have 30 seconds.
In closing, I won't push my button again. They have to come back within four months to give a status report as to how this is operating with these new mitigation, okay? It is really a hardship for 18 hours for security. If it turns out that it's under control, if it's made an effect because the recycling center's moved out, if it's going to make an effect because we're going to try to close up the methadone center that's causing problem, then of course we can make some adjustments in the hours of security.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. When I initially pushed my button, it was to make a point that Mr. Bernson made, in that the store doesn't have to close because they're not selling liquor. The store, if their products are what people want, can still stay in business without selling liquor. And as a person who was formerly in excess of a 30-year resident of the area, I know that that's been a problem store for many, many years. Mr. Holden referenced the store at Hauser and Pico as being the last one to get a license in that area, but it got a license over community objections. I joined picket lines out there years ago, 30 or more years ago, against the opening of the store, and it's been nothing but problematical ever since. People did not want it then, they don't want it now, and this is just a continuation. The situation along Washington Boulevard has vastly deteriorated with the motels and the liquor stores lined up down the street. I just wonder why we don't have a revocation going of this instead of a conditioning of it. Is this, maybe I should ask Ms. Msakowski or Mr. Bernson, is this the first step in a revocation action?
It is a revocation process that has been underway, where we are imposing further conditions to alleviate or abate the nuisance, and this is the condition we're suggesting that be imposed.
Thank you very much. I think that the revocation, from my observation, the revocation is a step in the right direction, and we need, I'm pleased that the police are going by and looking out for what's happening there. When we were trying to correct conditions in CD9 with some of the liquor stores, the police were very helpful. At one time, they had a liquor store patrol, because we have so many of them, and they would go from store to store to cut down on the loitering that was going on and the drinking outside the establishment, and that very often happens at so many of these liquor stores. So I hope that this will eventually result in a revocation of the license and not just the conditioning. And I will support the recommendation on the report.
Thank you. There being no other speakers, open the roll on item one, which is the committee report imposing all these conditions. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Unanimous vote, that is approved. Fourth with on item one. Let us move now to item two. We also have some cards on item two. So we'll open the public hearing on item number two, a matter in my district, and hear first from Melvin Weiss and then from Marty Hunter. Pull the mic up. There you go.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd just like to speak to two things. We've done some negotiating here, I understand. And the two things I'd like to speak to is the laundry exhaust from the dryers that come out on the roof. The pictures I gave to the Plum Committee showed the exhaust pipe from the laundry room traveling to the outside wall of the lint, to the lint box up on the roof, and allowing the smell and the dust to escape into the neighborhood, and this is not in compliance with city requirements. I'm almost positive. I understand that along with the decision made last week, all of the conditions from '92 through '95 are still in effect. Also, in August of 1992, the city council adopted a condition for Meadowbrook Manor called Trucks. This condition has been ignored by Meadowbrook Manor since 1992, and we requested the city council to enforce the condition entitled Trucks. I think all trucks making deliveries to Meadowbrook Manor should be required to present valid weight tickets from an authorized public scale before deliveries are accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Hunter. Good morning.
I wish to make a public thank you to councilperson Ruth Galanter, her chief administrator Mario, and to Mr. Landini, the assistant zoning administrator, for their diligence or consideration given to the property owners of the district. We sincerely thank you. It's been a long, long time.
It has been a long time, hasn't it? Thank you. Yes, I want you, I hope you were all paying attention to that. That closes the public hearing on item number two, and the chair recognizes Mr. Bernson, who has also been working on this for, it seems like, forever.
Mr. Bernson.
This thing has taken on a life of its own.
It certainly has.
However, members of the council, this has been before us a number of times. I think virtually all things have been worked out at this point. I would just like to make one amendment, and that is to approve the Plum report and recommendation, except that condition 13 be not removed. In addition, you might want to plan review, and I'd move the plan review be done in two years rather than three. So I will make that motion. I guess I will...
And I will happily second it.
We have a second. We've listened to this thing a number of times. Apparently, they are doing a good job and being a good neighbor, and I would move approval of the committee report.
Thank you. And with the council's indulgence, I also...
As amended.
As amended, yes. I also want to thank everybody for their patience. We have been at this, I think, for at least seven or eight years, probably longer. And the issue, for those of you who are not familiar with it, hi, Mr. Landini, how are you, is that this is a board and care home located in a residential area, and all of the issues that you have all discovered at one time or another have come up at one time or another. We think we have got an agreement now that will work with the amendments that leaves condition 13 in place and that brings the plan review back in two years instead of three. So I urge a yes vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Unanimous vote. Thank you all very much. Fourth with on item two, please. And we move now to item three. Item three, we have one card on item three. So we'll open the public hearing on item three and hear from Mr. Al Edwards. Are you here? Pull the mic up, you'll be allowed. You don't want to hurt your back.
That's for sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, and thanks for hearing us this morning on item three. Item three is concerning the approval from your, of public convenience and necessity. I'm here, I'm Kevin Franklin. I assisted Mr. Al Edwards with his application, with your city. First of all, I'd like to point out a few matters that you use as your denial, and I'd like to get some clarification. On item one, you denied this based on public convenience or necessity because the project has not received a conditional use permit. Well, that's false. The property has had a conditional use permit since 1984 for the sales of alcoholic beverages. It stopped selling alcoholic beverages when the property was sold to Mr. Edwards in 1998, and I have the statistic, data from ABC showing that. Secondly, you said the area has a documented high crime rate exceeding the citywide average. Well, all of South Central Los Angeles has a high crime rate exceeding the citywide average. So that's a moot point, basically, because all of LA is that way. And again, I have the data to support that. Their second denial was based on the fact that it has a negative influence associated with the sale of alcohol in the concerned community. Well, again, that's not very factual. As you, as someone did a investigation at this property, they will find that the community is not here to protest. There's no one here. That must mean something, that the community does see it as a public convenience and necessity, because it has been previously licensed since 1984, until last year, 1998, well, the end of '98. The next thing that you put down was, again, on that negative influence, the police department has no documentation of, since 1984, of this particular property posing a nuisance, as Mr. Bernson said on the very first case, a nuisance with documentation from the police department. There is no documentation from the police department against this location. So again, the investigator or a person who denied this request is basing it on non-factual information. Thirdly, this whole process is for public convenience and necessity. Myself and Al, for two weeks, tried to, and left messages at your hall offices to speak with you guys regarding this issue. We never received a phone call back, a page, cellphone, nothing. What kind of system are we running in the city of Los Angeles? Whereby, an investigator who investigates a location does not have the courtesy to call a potential person who has spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve a location. And I'm going to let Mr. Al, the owner of the location, speak to you on that issue, because it's not my hundreds of thousands of dollars that he spent. This is his money, his family. Let him talk to you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name's Alvin Edwards. I've been, I've worked for the county for over 20 years and recently left to start a new business with me and my wife here that's sitting over to the side. We purchased the whole corner, not just the store. We have also purchased on that corner, which is adjoining to the same building. It's all in one building. It's a liquor store, well, now it's a market, it's a laundromat, and we also have a hamburger stand. Our views on the community is that we like to get there. We're young, we want to get there and help our community, because we know it's on a down, down low on far as the people who live in the area, but we would just like to get there and help boost up the area. We've spent lots of money to take care of the building, and we have put new paint on there. I'm a softball player, and I plan to have all the kids there to sponsor softball teams. I've had numerous people in the neighborhood to come and help me do the construction on my building, and I've had meetings with the people in the neighborhoods to find out what negative problems they had about the place, and I really haven't had any. Everyone was still in agreeance that we need the place, that we need the store. I'm just here pleading with the council to let me, to let me open business.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
I'd like to add one more thing to his piece. As far as location, the location is in a location that's prime for his type of an establishment. If you have walked that location or been near that location, the nearest grocery store is probably a good mile and a half away.
All right.
Most of his traffic is foot traffic. So for the community, again, who he has spoken to, researched, they want him to have it so that when they're doing their grocery shopping, because he is a large store, he's not a small liquor store, they can buy their items and at the same time have the convenience of their wine or their beer to go along with it. Now, Mr. Al didn't say, and I'll say for him, he will accept any conditions that you may want to compose on him. To alleviate those problems, again, in your first meeting with all these people standing up here, Mr. Bernstein, Bernson, everyone, please, give this man an opportunity to reopen an establishment that was there before.
We can't begin to deliberate on it until you finish, and you're beginning to repeat yourself.
That's fine. If you're telling me my time is over, I'm like him. Take your time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Edwards, did you want to say something else?
Well, the store is located, it's the main run for the police department to head back to their main office, which is their headquarters, which is on 77th Street. The store is on 76th Street in Hoover. This is, I mean, just constantly patrolled by police, so it's not that, you know, we have a lot of loitering around there, and, you know, so it's very, very well secured around the area, you know. And like Mr. Franklin stated, it is foot traffic, you know, and, you know, we would just beg for the council's, you know, lenience and approval.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing on item three, and the chair recognizes Mrs. Walters.
Thank you very much. I'm very dismayed to hear someone state that they want to operate a liquor store to uplift the community. There's nothing uplifting about alcohol sales in this community. The statistics from the police department reveal in the subject crime reporting district, a total of 801 crimes were reported in 1998 compared to the citywide average of 276 crimes and to the high crime reporting district average of 331 crimes in the same period. The number of crimes that have been reported are triple the citywide average. This store is located within 1,000 feet of two churches, and the records of the State Alcoholics Beverage Control Board reveals that the license application to the site was revoked for the non-renewal of the license on July 29, 1998, and it has been over one year time, over the one-year time limit for the filing of a new conditional use application. And as such, council members, you've heard me say many times before, we don't need the number of liquor stores in South Central that we have, and this will certainly be one less, and I recommend that we deny the application here. There's nothing of public convenience or necessity that is required that this store would answer with alcohol. They're in business as a grocery store, they can continue to operate as a grocery store, but for liquor sales, I recommend that we deny the application to sell liquor at this location.
Thank you. Mr. Holden is next.
What are they asking, for beer and wine, or just...
Off-site.
Off-site. Yeah, I know. Off-site beer and wine? Well, I just want to say that Ms. Walters is the representative there, and perhaps will prevail on this issue, but I think we have to think about the overall picture. You have, in the minority community, methadone clinics, and the minority community have halfway houses, which mean people finished serving at that time, that they should have stayed in jail. You have crime and high unemployment. What do you expect? Those statistics are going to be larger than in other parts of the city where you may not even need a security card in West LA at some of the liquor stores, convenience stores. You may not even have them, because you don't have the element in the neighborhood. In Brentwood, Bel Air area, you don't have it there because you don't bring the problems to those neighborhoods. Methadone clinics, the kind of crime that we have, high unemployment, bad schools where the kids aren't being taught, teachers are not well-trained. What do you have? You're generating the problems, then you say, let's fix it this way. You've got to fix it from every approach. And then what happens is that the minority businessperson who have the guts... And then what happens is that the minority businessperson who have the guts and take the money they have to invest in the community, you say they can't operate. Well, it's your district. But I think you better think about the overall picture, what you're doing. Nobody can become middle-class there and get out of the area. Those people are going to buy beer and wine somewhere, they are going to buy it, or we're going to stop selling it everywhere. Yes, I protested that liquor store, Hauser and Pico, you were there, and I was there. We had too many in the neighborhood, we didn't want any more. But the fact of the matter is that other people can own these liquor stores and we don't say nothing. And we vote for them all the time in the supermarkets, in the mini mall markets, in other districts. And the other councilperson don't come up and say, "In my district," at least five or six of you, and say, "Don't permit that liquor store, do not permit that convenience store." They always say, "I want your support on this, it's good for our community," and we vote for it. But in our communities, all together, different. We've got a lot of problems, we've got a lot of unemployment, we've got a lot of crime. Yes, we have a lot of our people in prison, and some are there because they did crimes, and some are there because they didn't, and some are there because of the lifestyle and environment which they're forced to live in. When is this sickness going to stop and who's going to stop it? And I've got five seconds over.
No, five, seven seconds over. Thank you, Mr. Holden. That seems to be all the speakers we have on this topic, so open the roll on item number three, the committee report. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. All right, item number four. We don't have anybody from the public, but because there is a public hearing required, is there anybody in the chamber who wants to be heard on item number four? In that case, the public hearing is closed. Mrs. Chick.
Yes, and I've just been informed by LAPD that someone is coming over to answer questions. So I don't know if I'll need to hear from someone from the department or perhaps committee members in the chair.
Do you want to hold this on the desk?
Yeah, I guess I, I wanted to, I wanted to understand more clearly if we are both adding new categories of fees for the department, for LAPD, that the commission will be in charge of, and we're increasing fees that were already in existence?
Well, since we have somebody coming over, why don't we just hold this on the desk? And let's move on and get some more items out of the way here. Madam Clerk?
Items for which public hearings have been held, items five through nine.
Anybody on the council, any specials on items five through nine? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items 10 through 17, items for which public hearings have not been held.
Mr. Pacheco?
I'm sorry, can we reconsider and call number seven special?
All right, we'll call, reconsider item seven and call that special.
Fourteen special.
We're not up to that yet, hold on. Item 10 through 17, all right, Mr. Savornich calls fourteen special. Any other specials through item 17? Seeing none, open the roll on the rest of them, everything 10 through 17 except for fourteen. Close the roll, wait, open the roll. There we go. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Moving right along, next item.
Item 18 is closed session. Next item on the continued agenda is item 19, public hearing has not been held.
I have no cards. Is there anybody in the chamber who wishes to be heard on item 19? City attorney representation. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 19 is before us. Nobody seems, does anybody on the council have anything to say on item 19? Move fast, in that case. Well, push the button.
I think there are a lot of people here on item 19.
Well, I don't have any cards on item 19 and you didn't push your speaker button, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll push it now.
Thank you.
How's that?
That's good.
I pushed it.
All right, so we'll start with a report from the city attorney's office.
And I'd also like to have the contractors, who I believe are present, be asked to come up to this table.
Okay.
Would you, contractors, would you come to the other table, please? If we're going to hear it, let's hear it all.
Right, I'm not starting your time yet, I'm going to let them do a presentation.
Well, actually, I'd rather hear the presentations first.
Yeah, we're going to do the presentation first. Yes.
I don't, I raised this question once before, I don't think it's in order to have the contractors at the table where staff presents, and I would feel much more comfortable if they were on the other side of the rope there, not city staff.
How about if we let them sit there and we keep them quiet until it's their turn to talk?
Well, it's just the appearance. It gives them an official appearance that their status doesn't warrant. They're contractors with the city, hired on contract to do a job, and those seats are reserved for staff to have discussions with the council.
Mrs. Walters, when we, when we bring in an outside attorney, for example, who is a contractor of the city, we bring them up to the table as well. So I think we all understand they're not city salaried employees, but if they're under contract to the city, they are in fact working for the city, and we'll keep in mind, take note of the fact that they are not city staff, and we'll ask to hear from the city staff.
Cecil Marr from the city attorney's office, I'm joined by Blake Smith, who's a deputy city attorney, and by Commander Betty Calipas from the police department. We've provided a public report to you dated February 28, 2000, in which we outline a number of the issues that are, which are problematic in this particular contract. Basically, it's our view that this contract is inconsistent with other city policies, specifically the city's defense and the Grobson litigation. With respect to the Grobson litigation, we'll address that in private enclosed session. We've agendized that as a, as a status report, and we'd be glad to discuss the Grobson issues in enclosed session. With respect to this contract, we've outlined several problems that we found with the contract. Specifically, it does not provide for a confidential relationship with the city attorney's office. This is not work product. Everything that these individuals are doing, everything they say is subject to deposition, is subject to subpoena. That's particularly problematic when you have an adversarial relationship, an adversarial relationship in which you are trying to find the truth in a judicial proceeding. We basically find ourselves in a very odd position where we are, the city is an adversary in a judicial proceeding, taking a certain posture, and you have, through this contract, the city has, has basically commissioned auditors to be looking at the same facts during the time that we have this proceeding pending. The way it appears to the lawyers doing it is that we're on a collision course with ourselves, and it's not a good way of doing business.
Is the contract in place?
The contract's been in place since July. Our initial attempt was to try to work with the consultants. The problem is that with respect to the contract itself, the contract provides very specifically for a report. It does not provide for the kind of collaborative consulting relationship which would be most useful for the city. And when we attempted to deal or turn the, or interpret it in that way, we were met by objections by the contractors who view their primary focus as being one of submitting a, a report, first a draft report and then a final report. One of the biggest problems with that, of course, is we are unable to take any interim corrective action. If any research that these, this contractor, if, if in their research they discover a problem with any city procedures, we receive no notice of that. They are saving any such findings for their final report. That's going to be very difficult for us to defend in any subsequent litigation as to why we didn't take action after the contractors found out about something. So the bottom line is, I believe that for the last four months, we've attempted to resolve our disputes, we've attempted to work with this particular contractor. They, on the other hand, are standing on their contract, which they have every right to do. There's a fundamental flaw in the contract, we're suggesting that the contract be rescinded and that we attempt to negotiate a new contract to replace the existing one.
Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Goldberg, what else? You had asked for a staff report, you want to hear from the contractors? All right.
My name is, my name is Keith.
There we go. Okay.
My name is Keith Roman, I'm the president and principal of Public Interest Investigations.
My name is Sharon Lieber-Cartman, I am the principal of the law offices of Sharon Lieber-Cartman. We are co-venturers on this matter.
All right, let me just say, I apologize I was not available here yesterday when this first came up, so if I ask you questions that everybody else knows the answer to, I apologize to that.
We weren't here yesterday either.
All right.
This letter that we're receiving today is the first we've heard of the types of objections the city attorney is raising here. We met with Mr. Marr approximately two weeks ago, and he raised to us some concerns about liability for the city of Los Angeles. He did not raise any issues with us regarding our failure to perform in any way. The, there are, in this letter from the city attorney, which we did not get a chance to review or provide input to, there are a number of fundamental misstatements of fact and of agreement, and which we find very, very troubling. The, the city, for instance, at one point, and without going through this in exhaustive detail, the report says that the city attorney's office was not involved in the implementation of that contract until about September 1999. That is not correct. The city attorney's office, including Fred Merkin, participated in the negotiation of this contract and all the terms and conditions therein. If they had issues about the way the contract was structured, they should have and could have raised those. And in fact, when I met with Mr. Marr the other day, he acknowledged that this was a screw-up. The, it now appears that we are being made scapegoats for the city attorney's drafting a contract which exposes the city to liability. We are not suggesting that we do anything that's inconsistent with the contract, in fact, that's our goal here, is to fulfill the contract. However, if the city opts to cancel it, that is their option. The, for the outreach issue, for instance, in terms of the anonymous interviews, members of our staff initially met with Commander Calipas and other representatives of the police department and were informed that an initial concern was the issue of anonymity, that the people should be able to have anonymity when they contact us. In any event, this issue of how to contact police department employees has been on the table since September. It is now at the point when we are 75% done with our work on this contract and preparing to write our conclusions that the city attorney takes this action. The anonymous interviews have been successfully conducted with every single city department except the police department. The, we were never heard before, well, let me go on. Our proposal talks about the fact that we want to reach out and to conduct reviews of the background investigation materials. The, we have not refused, the other thing that says is we refuse to provide timely information. In fact, what we've committed to doing is allowing the city attorney's office and the city to review our report in draft format to provide additional input and, and background. And, and Ms. Hartman, I'll let you.
The contract does specifically provide that the draft report comes to the city, and they have at least 30 days. In fact, the city indicated to us that they did not want to be bound by that 30-day time period. So a draft goes to the city, and the city has 30 days or more to review, comment, ask for changes, do whatever it thinks appropriate.
When you say it goes to the city, does that mean to the city attorney's office?
It goes to the chief administrative officer, who is the person that we have contracted with. I assume the CAO sends it where...
Right, now, but you've answered the, my basic question. Yes, thank you.
I would comment on, I'm struck, really, by the disparity between what Mr. Marr just said and what is in this letter, which I was very startled by having just seen it half an hour ago. Mr. Marr really, I think, has, in his oral presentation here, has accurately outlined a series of difficult steps. The city entered into the settlement agreement in Grobson I in about 1992, where it agreed to hire an expert on sexual orientation. The city didn't make that hire. In 1996, Mr. Grobson sued again, and one of his allegations was that the city, for breach of contract, one of his allegations was that the city had not hired a sexual orientation consultant. Only at that time did the city advertise for such an expert. So the litigation that you're being told is now pending, was in fact pending at the time that the RFP went out, and it has been pending ever since. Those were the circumstances against which we made our proposal. Our proposal talks about anonymous outreach to city employees, those pages are specifically incorporated in our contract. We're not doing anything that everybody hasn't known from the beginning that we would do, and we're doing it on the timetable, that we said we would do it. It took a year to negotiate the contract, the city attorney was part of the last two months of it, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Just one other thing, point if I may, is that the PII's actions, and by this, referring to the joint venture, suggests that it views itself not as the city's consultant, but rather as an independent fact-finder and auditor. That is our understanding of what Grobson calls for, that is our understanding of what the RFP called for, and that is our understanding of what the contract called for. I welcome Mr. Marr's comments, which indeed are a bit at odds with the tone of the letter, but we're just doing what we got hired to do. And at the point at which we're getting ready to issue our report, the city attorney is concerned about it.
Okay, let me suggest that, this is only the beginning of this discussion, there are at least five council members who have something to say and probably will have questions for, well, everybody has something to say, but five of them have pushed the button to indicate they're going to do it properly. So I anticipate that all of you are going to wind up getting some questions, and if you're, if you're ready, we're going, we're going to start calling on the council members. Ms. Goldberg is first.
Let me just start with the context, because I think, rather than who said what to whom, the dilemma is what I'd like us to focus on. And I'd like everybody to hear at both tables what I think the dilemma is, okay? In Grobson, we agreed in a settlement to item number 10, and I'm going to read number 10 out loud, because you all don't have it in front of you probably. It says, "The council," that's us, "shall appropriate and set aside sufficient funds to compensate an outside consultant or consultants to assist in setting up and maintaining the programs and modifications and procedures instituted as a result of this agreement to review the programs, policies, and procedures of the city and its departments," so it's now more than the police department, "to suggest additional means of eliminating discrimination in employment on the basis of sexual orientation, and to prepare report or reports of his or her activities and recommendations, a copy of which shall be provided to counsel for plaintiffs." That's the people suing us. Now, it seems to me that what has happened is that as we got closer to Grobson II, people, and I think rightly so, began to worry that the, that in agreeing to this in Grobson I, we kind of set ourselves up against ourselves, that we are actually required by the first agreement to give information that might help the plaintiffs against us in the second case. Am I correct?
No, I would disagree, and I...
Sounds like to me.
Okay, I don't want to go too deep into this, however...
Maybe we should do this in closed session.
The problem is the inconsistency between the agreement that, in Grobson I, and the contract, and we're dealing with the contract.
Well, but you see, the contract took more than a year to negotiate. It went through the city attorney's office. Why didn't the city attorney's office say when the contract went there, "We don't want you to do anonymous surveys," if that's the issue?
The, well, again, we're getting into some details that the anonymous surveys, obviously, were not either part of the contract or Grobson I settlement agreement. That was something that was, as far as I'm concerned, was something that came out of the administration of the contract, which is another problem. But what I would, what I would say, just in summary fashion, is paragraph 10 needs to be complied with, but the contract, which is in effect, is not the way to comply with it. And our objection is to the contract.
Yeah, but hold it, hold it, hold it. Then, why has this contract, how long has this contract been in force?
Since July 1999.
So why did it take so long for us to decide that that wasn't the way to do it?
The first that time I became aware of it was in November of 99. I directed my staff to work with the contractors, because they were the city's contractors. Two weeks ago...
But the city attorney's office, maybe not you personally, but the city attorney's office was involved in negotiating the contract.
That's correct, and I think part of the problem may have been a lack of insight into Grobson II, the Grobson II litigation, at the time the contract was negotiated. And that was the missing link. My understanding is the attorneys that dealt with it were dealing with the contract issues, were dealing with confidentiality issues, were dealing with a lot of issues involved in the contract, but the missing link was the association of this contract with Grobson II. Now, at this stage, we face a choice, and quite frankly, I don't like having to bring this to the council, because I anticipated your question, and I, and I think it's a really fine question. The problem is, we are down this trail a long way, and there is a problem. Now, I think I have, and this office has an ethical responsibility, professional responsibility, to bring the problem...
to bring the problem to you.
Nobody's asking you not to do that.
Right.
I do, however, think that the particular report sounds more like you're trashing the contractors and trying to deal with the problem. That's my personal opinion in reading it.
And, and to that extent, I, I had absolutely no attempt to trash the contractors or try to, I'm not trying to trash the contractors anyway. I wanted to bring to you the facts that we are aware of, to, and, and there may be quibbles in there and disagreements. Quite frankly, I think there is a fundamental problem that we need to deal with.
Okay. I agree that there's a fundamental problem. My, my concern is, is doing this in public.
All right.
I think there are some serious questions about our legal strategy in Grobson II, and that this all should be handled in closed session.
All right. So, let me suggest, since if we do go into closed session, we're probably not going to take the contractors in with us, let me try to run through the, the rest of the speakers here, and we'll see if there are issues that come up that require us to go into closed session. We'll hold those, and then we'll go into closed session. Ms. Zakowski is next.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I was concurring. I, I think we should go into closed session now. I think most of the issues are going to evolve. I think, I was pleased that the contractors were here today to make their case. As Chair of Public Safety Committee, I got the request from the contractors about the problem as it affected the police department. But from there, that's when the city attorney started opine, and I think in response to Ms. Goldberg's question as to why didn't the city attorney do anything since, from July to November, the, although the contractor had been doing what they perceived was consistent with the contract with all other departments, the police department, when the contractors went there, was the first department to say, "City Attorney, is this okay?" So, all the other departments were doing it without city attorney consultation. Ms. Goldberg is right. The city attorney signed this contract, but then the city attorney was not the administrator of this contract. The city attorney who handled the contract was only a contract-compliance city attorney, not our risk management, police department analysts, who are familiar with Grobson I, who are familiar with Grobson II, who could have and should have looked at this. And I think the essence of what we have today, and I think there's a lot more to discuss in executive session, is exactly what Ms. Goldberg read, and that is the settlement agreement. But I think there was a word that I would have emphasized different in the reading of it. "The council shall set aside sufficient funds to compensate an outside consultant or consultant to assist in setting up and maintaining." Assist says to me that that is a contractor who works with us as part of our team and not independently, and I think that's really the crux of what we're going to have to discuss. And the city attorney is setting up some suggestions as to how we would handle that from this point on, in the midst of a lot of things where the city attorney has brought a concern. And even the contractor said today, "The city may have some liability problems, but don't hold it against us. We're doing what we think we ought to do." But the city attorney is saying that in itself is where the problem lies, that we need to discuss, I think, in executive session.
Okay. Mrs. Chick. Well, wait a second. Let's, let's find out. We have, we have four people who still want to talk and-
Point of order, if I may, Madam-
All right. What's your point of order?
President. In light of the fact that each comment that is being made may come back to us in another form of litigation, I would urge us to curtail discussion of this matter-
Yes.
And move this entire discussion into closed session.
All right. Now, I think unless I hear an objection to that, that we're going to have to do that. So, my suggestion is that you guys don't go too far. We can't bring you in the executive session to start with. We may have questions, or we may want to bring you in to talk to us about it. And we'll ask the city attorney and the police department, city staff, to stay in, and-
Madam Council President-
Yes.
Could I add just one additional piece of information?
Sure.
In that final two months of negotiating the contract, one of the attorneys who sat in from the city attorney was Cheryl Ward, who was at that time assigned to the Grobson case.
Okay. I, I think that, I would like you to understand, because I understand why you're a little distressed about this, but I would like you to understand that our goal here, the council's goal, is to try to solve the problem, and we are very much aware that you have been working under a contract that was duly signed. So, we'll, we're going to try to address that as well. So, we have a, while, let's recess this item for a second, and then we're going to go into closed session. Mr. Savornich has withdrawn his concern to call item 14 special, so I'm going to ask that we open the roll on item 14. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. You with me? There we go. Okay. That is unanimously approved.
Madam-
And Mr. Pacheco had called number seven special.
Madam President, with going into closed session on that item, I don't know that it was your intent not to hear from the contractor, if it is to be deemed appropriate.
No, I, I just asked them to stand by.
I know what it was, but they may have been-
The council needs to make that decision in the closed session.
I understand that. But is it their assumption that they will not have a chance to address the council? And if so, we may not want them to get away with it.
Well, I just told them, if you were listening, I just suggested that they not go very far, because although we couldn't bring them into the executive session at the beginning, the council may wish to have discussions with them that would require their presence.
Yes.
So, I already did that.
Well, thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, well, we're not in closed session yet either, but, you know. All right. We have, now, do you want to take item seven before we go into closed session? All right. Mr. Pacheco.
Is there staff here from CUD? I just wanted to get an update on this. This was an issue that had some qualifying language in terms of what activity would occur, and the deadline of February 29th passed. I just wanted an update before we approve it.
Gloria Stevenson Clark from the Community Development Department. Yes, Councilman, we are able to update you on the performance of the Hollenbeck Police Business Council's Consortium for L.A. Bridges. The program has, at this time, brought all of its issues into full compliance. They were placed on probation based upon delinquent payments, their reports, and also performance with regard to their NACSE, and all those items have been taken care of in addition to the stabilization of their project director at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to give a report and make it part of our presentation today.
So, you're now moving approval, right?
So, we're moving approval as, 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 as worded.
Right. And at this time, we would not be able to, we would not be recommending a changeover in the lead, because the agency has met the conditions.
Thank you. I, I understood that.
Okay. I think we've got that. Open the roll on item seven. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Item four is still on the desk, but we don't have 12 people, so we can't do the ordinance.
I think Chick had some questions.
She did, and I don't know if we had staff here on those, but why don't we just, can we hold that till tomorrow, since we don't have enough votes for the, well, we don't have enough votes to pass an ordinance anyway. We don't have 12 people here. So, I think- It would be fine to continue it, and I, but I'd want to make sure that my questions get addressed, and it can be directly to me or in committee on Friday. I'm sure between now and Friday, we can get you answers to your questions. So, we're going to continue item four. We've acted on seven. We acted on 14. Did we do 19? We did 19, so that leaves 18 and 20, and we're ready to go into closed public comments.
Hernandez, fourth with on 13, please.
Fourth with on 13, without objection. All right. Do you want to do public comment first? Okay. All right. This is the time for public comments from the public on items not on today's agenda. Mr. Candido Morris.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, yesterday I woke up in the City of Los Angeles, and I believed I lived in the greatest city in the greatest country in the world. This morning I woke up and I read the two newspapers, and I still believe I live in the greatest city in the greatest country in the world. We have a city family member who is hurting, and we need to give them a help, a helping hand. We need to extend our hand out and say, "How can we help?" I still believe in the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department. I still believe that Chief Parks wants to do what's right for the City of Los Angeles. So, Mr., Madam President, council members, I ask that you join me in doing all that we can to resolve these issues.
Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, members of council, the Federal Bureau of Investigation is assisting the Los Angeles Police Department because the county's board of supervisors kept its district attorney, my friend, Gil Garcetti, from assisting Chief Parks. Madam President, if I may quote Supervisor Canabe, the supervisor said, quote, "He wants to, Police Chief Parks wants to pass the buck," unquote. When the department sought help in prosecuting these felonies, the city's attorney cannot prosecute felonies. Now, thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period. Mrs. Walters has asked that we reconsider item 13 for the purpose of changing her vote, and without objection, we're just going to record the change in her vote. It does not change the outcome. And that, I think-
Motions for posting and referral.
Motions and referral. Unanimous vote.
And the desk is clear.
And the desk is clear. Now, we're going into executive session. So, anybody who is not involved in items 18 or- We've, somebody needs to, well, somebody needs to, let's go have a news conference on the eighth floor. All right. We're back. Items 18, 19, and 20 will be continued until Friday, and I believe that clears the desk.
Yes, Madam President.
And if, I believe we have some adjourning motions, because I know I have at least one. Will everybody please rise for adjourning motions? And I understand we did not do this yesterday when several of us were at the funeral, so I'd like to begin by asking that everybody join me in adjourning in memory of Harry Sizemore, whom most of you knew and certainly are going to miss. Harry was one of those city employees who worked here for over 30 years, managed to make friends everywhere he went, and also got an incredible amount of work done, and had the absolutely best giggle of anybody in the entire world. He's, he passed away suddenly, unexpectedly, less than two years after he retired, and in the middle of all his plans to go traveling with Marcy. He survived by his wife, Marcy, his son, Michael, and his daughter, Shelley, and we're all going to miss him. And there was an enormous city family at the funeral, and everybody was in tears.
All members, Ms. Galanter.
Oh, yes. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Eleanor Hiddleman.
Oh, you know, I, did I, I started to do it the other day, and we had the name spelled wrong, so why don't you do it, and I'll join you?
Okay. Eleanor Hiddleman is, was an incredible woman. She was taught from infancy that she was the equal of any man. She was an early feminist, and politics was her life and her passion. She was a young progressive Democrat. She lobbied state government and became indispensable aide to a United States senator, a California Attorney General. She was a legislative director for the Southern California CIO. At target of 50s McCarthyism, she devoted her energies to the problems of racial and ethnic minorities, neglected children, and other victims of injustice. She was active in Women 4, a friend and a staunch supporter of Chief Justice Elizabeth, Rose Elizabeth Byrd. But lots of us who knew her knew that she was like a sparkling conversationalist, a compelling storyteller, a person who, who was fiercely proud of her Armenian background. She's survived by her husband, Joe Hiddleman, M.D., three generations of family, and lots and lots of friends. She was a woman who I found to, to be simply delightful, right to the end of her life, a person who was vivid in her imagination and very willing to share with you her political perspective on absolutely-
And she always did, as a resident of my district.
On absolutely everything.
Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add on Harry Sizemore, that in, in addition to all of his attributes that we know and learned yesterday in terms of family and, and city family, that my observation in terms of the number of people who were there was, was that had we had a public works emergency yesterday, the command center, command post could have been sent at, at St. Mel's Church, because everyone, from every aspect of public works, previously and currently-
And, and water and power.
And water and power. I mean, it was really a public works command central. But Harry was also a constituent of the 11th District, very active in some of his community activities, and so I would like to be a co-presenter on that.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Isaac Newton Niles, passed on February 27. Mr. Niles was 92 years of age, remained active in the community, and served at the Holy Communion Church. He is survived by his son, Judge Albin Niles, daughter, Elizabeth Niles, sister, Sarah Clark, and a host of grandchildren, and it should be known that he will be sorely missed.
Thank you. I think that's it. Call the roll, please. Thank you. Council is adjourned.